Good evening. It is 5:15. This Wednesday, January 18th, and the Carroll City Council is now in session. Would you all please rise? Join the meeting and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in Israel, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll call all our presidents. Um, the first item on tonight's agenda.
Backbeat.
There, there's, okay. First issue on tonight's agenda under resolutions. We have fiscal year '23 salary resolution amendment and appointment of city manager and some items of business there. And Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. If you'll recall, when we met, I think in October, maybe early November, uh, to prepare the advertisement for the city manager's position, uh, the council decided to, uh, adjust the salary range for that position. Uh, so, but we did not take formal action. So this first resolution tonight is simply to formalize that action that you decided on, uh, whenever it was, November. And, uh, so that would be the first resolution that we'll need to do tonight. I also did want to mention that our new city manager is online with us via Zoom. And, uh, so he's listening in and hoping that you'll approve this.
Aaron, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you just fine.
Okay. Um, we're about to do some business, but would you like to share a word or two with us? I'm putting you on the spot, but you're welcome to if you have a moment.
Yeah, no, uh, I'd like to greatly, uh, I greatly appreciate the opportunity. I'm looking forward to, uh, being part of the city of Carroll and, uh, getting moved down there, my wife and I. And, uh, we thank, thank you all for the opportunity. We're, we're really excited.
Okay, glad to have you onboard, Aaron. And, uh, for you, it's probably going to be a super fast, uh, eight weeks or so, but for us, it's not going to go fast enough, and certainly for Jeff and Laura. But, um, I, we have some business to make it official, but I considered it official when you and I exchanged cellphone numbers today. So to me, it's a done deal. But, um, we do have to do, the first item would be to amend the fiscal year '23 salary resolution. And if everybody's had a chance to review that, I'd seek a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Second.
Tom and Carolyn. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Or Nero?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes, motion is approved.
Perfect, thank you.
Then the second resolution is simply a resolution approving the contract, uh, that was prepared, uh, with Midwest Municipal Consulting, uh, for Aaron. And, uh, city attorney, uh, Dave Bruner has reviewed that as well. And we have a signed copy from Aaron with us tonight. So if there's any questions or comments, we could do that. Otherwise, uh,
Any questions or comments to it? Okay, I would seek a motion to approve the city manager employment contract resolution.
So I'm moved. Second.
Tom, and then Kyle by a hair. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Base?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Or Nero?
Yes.
Perfect.
Motion is approved.
Congratulations, Aaron.
Well, again, thank you very much. I look forward to working with all of you.
Okay, thank you again. Stick around if you wish. The excitement's yet to come, but, um...
Well, I am going to stick around a little bit to listen to the budget talk.
Okay. And then finally, just the employment contract itself. We still, is there a motion just to approve?
That was done by the resolution.
Okay, so that, the resolution does do that. So that's not a separate item. Okay. All right. Thanks again, Aaron. Okay, under reports tonight, and, uh, part of the reason why we're here is the, uh, pretty much second half of the budget work session. And, uh, Laura, I turn it over to you. And then...
Yes, what we have on a schedule to have a couple outside agencies. The first one is, uh, Animal Rescue of Carroll. And I believe Sammy is here to talk to us about their funding request.
Okay, Miss Sammy.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, Sammy.
I am Sammy Elliott. I am the director at Animal Rescue of Carroll. Um, I have been the director since we opened our doors in September of 2016. So just, I'm kind of a numbers person, so I've got some numbers to share with you first before I get into the why. Um, in 2022, we took in 387 cats and 87 dogs for a total of 474 animals, which is, which is a lot. Um, and I have about 80 volunteers, approximately 80 volunteers that take care of all of our animals, day in and day out. We have people that come in early in the mornings and, um, throughout the day to take care of the animals. Of those animals that came into us, 87 of those intakes were transferred to us from other places. Of those 86 that were, or 87 that were transferred to us, 76 of those were transferred to us from Carroll Vet Clinic after the animal stray holds were up. So, uh, since the, since the, all the animal, all the strays that are picked up go to CBC. And then, uh, we work closely with Mary at CBC to make sure that as many animals as we can, if we can take them, we take them. So 76 of those 87 came to us. And I couldn't, I don't have the number. I couldn't tell you how many of them have been adopted, but most of them have probably already been adopted out as well. Um, we did have 376 adoptions last year, as well as, um, 58 other outcomes. So other outcomes could be transferring to other agencies, which we do work with several other shelters to transfer out. If, some shelters sometimes are low on numbers of animals, and so we'll transfer out if we have an animal that's difficult, um, to adopt. Here, we might find another shelter. So 58 of those other outcomes. And then, uh, we always have some, because we, we have a huge... We have, we have a lot of kittens, young kittens that come in, neonatal kittens that go into foster homes. And so unfortunately, because they come in and they're already fragile, we lose several of those. So of the outcomes, we had 30 of those that were kittens that had passed away through our foster program. But, so we had a total of 434 outcomes. So we had 474 animals come into our system. We had a total of 434 animals that went out of our system. Everybody else is still there, uh, if, if they're still there. Some of them may have been adopted since then. Um, we, we are not, we are considered a no-kill shelter. So that means that we're not going to euthanize an animal because we don't have space for them. And there are some, like, regulations in order to be considered no-kill, and that is to have your live release rate be over 90%. Um, and in 19, in 2022, our live release, our, or our save rate, I guess we should call it, our save rate was 93%. So, um, we do have that, and it did increase 2% from 2021. So I, like I said, it's, it's, a lot of it is from the volunteers that we have that are coming in and, and the different connections that we have with everyone. So why we're asking for, for money from the city. You guys have always supported us, and we, we appreciate that. And we do work closely with Carroll Vet Clinic, like I said before, to try and save as many of the animals as we can from there. If we aren't able to take in animals, we do help, we have help to transfer to other shelters as well that can take them. Um, as with most things in society, recently, we've had an increase. The food, litter, different supplies that we need to take care of the animals has increased. Um, so we've had that increase. We do, we do get donations from, from people, and we are able to work with, uh, a food bank so that we can get some things a little bit cheaper. But those, those increase have, um, those costs have increased. And then as well as, um, our, our vet costs, because all of our animals have to go out spayed or neutered. Um, we, we vaccinate everybody, um, blood test. Cats, cats get blood tested and dogs get blood, cats get blood tested for feline, the chican FIV, and dogs get, um, tested for heartworm. Um, and then as things come up, there are always other times that we have to take care of, um, things that, more major medical issues. So like this year, we had several, it, it just so happened that our more, our major medical issues were on cats this year, but we had, uh, 10 major medical cat issues that needed to be cared for. So some of those were, we had, I think it was four, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me of what happened. We had four kittens that needed to have their eyes removed because of an injury or, or an illness that caused their eyes to not, um, function properly. We had two or three cats that needed amputations. We've had some, some cats that needed teeth pulled. So, so like all of our medical costs, just those, those major medical things were, were large and cost more. But then you also put on the cost of, of the spay and the neutering. We're lucky because we do have Mike Davis, who is a retired vet that keeps his license up. And he's able to, like, consult with us on a lot of things. So we don't have, our, our vet bills aren't as large as they could be at some other shelters. So, um, so those are, those are like probably our two main reasons that we're, that we're asking for money and that we have also asked for the increase. Um, and, you know, for us, it's just being able to see all the faces of, of everybody. I do have one picture that I brought that I wanted to share, just because this, this family just recently adopted from us. And if you can see, that little boy's face, it was just amazing. He was, it was cool because he kept saying, "This kitty is perfect for me. This kitty is perfect for me." So, you know, that's why we do it too. And that is all I have. If anybody has any questions.
Sammy, how many dogs did you say you transferred in? Or you said 387 cats and how many dogs?
I can't, we had 87 dogs total. And I can't tell you exactly, like, for this, for which ones we transferred in, how many were cats and dogs? I could get those numbers for you, but it's 87 total.
Just curious.
It was more, I can tell you our number would be large, the dog, more cats come in than dogs transferred.
And do you just take those transfers when you know you have space to take them? Or are they just...
We take, so we take them, if they're coming from the vet clinic, we make room for them.
Right.
So I have some fosters that will take them. Um, sometimes we set up extra areas at the shelter if we have to. Sometimes Mary will hold them a little bit longer so that we can get some, if I know some animals are going out, she'll hold on to them. So, so we do work pretty closely with her to make sure.
Brad, when we get an animal, do we take it to the vet clinic or to them?
Everything goes to the vet clinic first.
Do you know how many you've done in the last year? Do you know by that?
Well, she said 76 came from the vet clinic.
Yeah, majority are probably cats. Most of our dogs we pick up do get claimed by the owner. There's a few, maybe this last year, less than five dogs would have transferred over. Mostly would be cats, I'm guessing.
And I could get the exact numbers for you.
And those numbers, the vet clinic takes for the sheriff's department also.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Uh, Tammy, uh, you mentioned that roughly two-thirds of your annual budget, and then you let, list the veterinary, veterinary care services, et cetera, et cetera. What is your total annual budget? I, you mentioned you have 80 volunteers, which is wonderful, but what, what, what is the total?
I, I don't have that number in my head. I would have to get that from you, and I could, and I could get it too.
I was just curious, when you said two-thirds, that, that is a significant amount. Thank you. That's okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Sammy? Hearing none. Okay, we, um, as Laura mentioned during Monday's workshop, that the, uh, the nonprofits were included in the budget, but the increases, the two that were asking for increases, actually three. There's three nonprofits that are asking for increases, were, were not included. Is that correct? And so, uh, we can discuss it here right now, but in the essence of time and weather, you know, we could also do so Monday night. I think if I understood you correctly this morning, Monday night, we would like to be able to have an idea whether or not we can set the max levy public hearing date. So the, the target is to try and have everything wrapped up by Monday. So does anybody have any comments about that? Make a decision on it further Monday? Perfect. Okay, Sammy, thank you very much. Safe travel, safe travel home. You live in town?
I do, yes, just a couple blocks.
All right, be careful. Daycare?
Yep, so the other, um, outside agency that we had lined up for tonight is the Carroll Area Child Health, Child Care Center and Preschool. And it does look like Lexi and Keely are online.
There they are.
There they are.
Hello?
Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, can you hear us?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, we'll go ahead here. First of all, thanks so much for inviting us to join you via Zoom. Um, busy place over here, and with the weather, we were allowed, uh, it allowed us to get all of our staff home safely, uh, before the weather. Um, but my name is Keely. I'm the exec, executive director here at the Carroll Area Child Care Center and Preschool. And I'm Lexi, the onsite director over here. We've been working together for the past year. I've been in this role for 11 years, and Lexi joined us about a year and a half ago. Um, so we're excited to be here today. So thanks again for having us. I wanted to share a little bit about our center for those of you that aren't as familiar with us. So we are a quality childcare center that offers full-time childcare, Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for approximately 150 children on a daily basis. With that said, at this time, we are currently at 155 children. And we are full when there's 168. So you'll notice that there are some vacancies there. We have 25 full-time staff members, six part-time staff members, equalling 31 staff members. So at this point, we are, um, just about fully staffed. We, we do have two vacancies that we're optimistic that we will fill. Um, but we're here today because of the important role we play in Carroll's economic development. So we are proud to be able to provide quality, consistent, reliable childcare for so many families in the Carroll area. So it, it levels out to about 100 families in the Carroll area that use us for childcare so that they can go to work every day. And in looking at the list of parents and where they work, um, it does cover and, and, um, basically it defines that 75 businesses have employees that are parents of children that enroll their children here. So we're very proud to be able to do that, and, um, we just feel so lucky that we're being supported by so many members of the community, and especially community members that are also playing a crucial role for the city of Carroll. Uh, so we're here today. The reason we're here, last year, last fiscal year, we visited and we received $17,000 in funding from the city of Carroll, which allowed us to increase our current staff. Some of our current staff, our loyal current staff, uh, from a starting pay to $10 an hour to $11 an hour. And with that new starting pay, we were actually able to recruit three additional new employees as well. So that's something very exciting because it is hard to recruit new childcare providers at that starting rate of pay. So that's something that has, has us feeling very lucky and grateful because with fulfilling those three additional full-time employees positions, we were actually able to increase enrollment and open eight additional full-time childcare spots. Uh, so we're, the hardest part of our job is certainly turning families away when we are at full capacity for the amount of staff members that provide the care. So, um, being able to offer that increased starting pay has really allowed us to move forward, and that's just in one year. We are here today seeking an increase, $40,000, so that we can increase pay for all 25 of our full-time staff members. The amount of, that we're, that we're asking for would allow us to increase all 25 full-time staff by 75 cents an hour, which gets them just that much closer to a more livable wage. So for those individuals that are currently making $11 an hour, the $11.75 I know is enticing to them, and it's something that they need to be able to afford to work. Um, I'm, you guys might be familiar with the livable wage number, the hourly rate of pay, which is actually $16 an hour, and that's for someone who is single without children. While many of our employees have families. So it doesn't necessarily pertain to everyone, I understand that, but just getting us one step closer to that livable wage, um, is such a huge step, and it's proven to be a big step each time we are able to increase their pay. Many of you will ask the question, how will we sustain this increase for our employees? And I just want to express how, like, a forward fashion we've been in in this past fiscal year of what we have done to better ourselves financially. Uh, we were lucky enough to be a recipient of the Iowa Stabilization Funds, which allowed us to pay off our debt that we were paying for loans for our roof, parking lot, and building. So that has put us in a way better financial state that we are finally able to focus on what we need to continue the daily operations and continue to be able to staff our center to be able to continue to provide care for as many families as possible. And it is truly our goal to be able to open those eight, or we opened eight, to open eight more. We still have eight positions available for families so that they can, you know, start their family, maybe their new job, um, and be able to work, but also have reliable childcare and feel safe and comfortable here in our community. Um, in addition to how, how, another way we will sustain that is we always look to the parents for their help and the tuition rates that they are paying. But at the same time, we have to be mindful in making it affordable for parents to work and send their child to childcare. So we are always mindful, and we receive good direction, um, consistently through our board of directors. But we, we are feeling really good in the, the place that we're in right now, especially with, uh, some major repairs behind us as well. We also had to repair our roof, and we've been doing some general upkeep, so we're not expecting any large items to be able, or that will require repair or maintenance. We're also being super mindful of our daily costs. Um, and so reducing, uh, like price reduction in our general daily expenses, food, supplies, everything you need to upkeep a childcare center. Um, if anyone has any questions, I am ready for those.
Thanks, Keely. Keely, I've got just a couple of them. Um, this is Mark. Uh, and the, the first one, do you happen to know when the last time that the city of Carroll gave the center an increase?
I do not know that for sure, um, especially being in, you know, this executive director role for only one year. I am not aware of the last time that, that amounts from, yeah, that, that it hasn't been $17,000. I could certainly look into that, but I wouldn't get back to you.
Yeah, Keely, I can get that information. I have that. I just didn't bring my book with me. Um, I'm guessing it's been probably at least five years since there's been a, an increase.
Okay. The, the next question, Keely, is again related to this year's request. Do you anticipate this to be, you know, a, a one-off? Or do you anticipate the need, you know, for the increase in the subsequent years as well?
I don't foresee, I mean, I definitely want to continue to increase our staff pay. I, I will say I don't always plan to look to the city of Carroll for that, uh, increase consistently.
Yeah, the question just had to do in terms of sustainability, you know, more so than anything. Um, and then the, the, the next question isn't really directly related to the request as much as it is, you know, Glidden has opened up a center. I understand New Hope is amidst doing the same. Has that opened up some opportunities for you guys to, uh, help people that have been on the waitlist for quite a while? Has that opened up any opportunities there for you?
Um, not, not exactly. I mean, we're, um, consistently being, you know, looked, looked at and reached out for guidance. Um, the only, like, I would say the effect, a major effect that, that will have on us is the possibility that our current employees will look elsewhere for employment in a similar field. And that's certainly affected us, I should say, right when Glidden opened. We did lose, um, about three of our loyal employees to the Glidden Center.
Okay. So you're limited primarily right now to open up spots strictly to staff? I mean, that's, space-wise, you're okay. You just don't have enough bodies, correct?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. And it's been really great being able to enroll new families and new children because we do have the staff, and we were very, we took our time with it. And we, we have some really dedicated staff members now, so a good core group that we felt comfortable doing that. And, um, it, it's just really refreshing. We feel really solid right now, and we just want to keep it going.
Okay. Any, any other questions?
I, I have a few. Uh, Keely, this is Carolyn Seaman, and I know you're doing a great job, but some issues came up, uh, when you mentioned keeping it affordable, sustainability. I, I looked, and I could not find your rates. Is every, uh, is the tuition the same for every household?
Yes, so we offer primary and secondary rates. Yes, everyone pays the same rate if they have the same age child. So if they're in, on, like, an onboarding infant, say it's $200 a week. But in the event that that family were to have another child, uh, there is a secondary rate, which offers like a $15, I would say, decrease. So basically like a $15 discount. They're at a secondary and primary rate. But absolutely, the rate sheets are consistent for all families enrolled.
Okay, here, here's, uh, this is my question. Some daycares have a tiered system, and it's income-based. Have you ever considered that? Because to me, all your parents aren't earning the same incomes. And it seems to me it would be, you, you could sustain your, um, payroll that you're shooting for, uh, possibly if you looked at some type of a tier system. Is that something that, um, you've considered? Because you do need a, a steady stream instead of, you know, like a Band-Aid, sometimes from Carroll, you know, sometimes a grant. Uh, and I, I also looked up, and the Department of Human Services has childcare assistance, and that's a tiered system. And I'm looking at the rate, the rates as of, uh, July of '21. Uh, the Department of Human Services, uh, for childcare employees, I didn't know this existed, has a recruitment and retention bonus program, but the employee must apply. And so they, they, if, if they are employed, there is a program the state will supplement their wages. But the employee must apply. I didn't look at the application. And then another one, I don't know if many of your employees are working on, you know, like, a, a, a two-year degree or any type of training or... And the, the state of Iowa, again, has, it's called wages statewide. And again, the employee, uh, applies and can, can receive, um, stipends that add to their wages. I, I just wonder if you've considered that, a tier, to me, a tiered system is really a fair way to go. But I, I don't know your business like you do, so I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, well, absolutely. I appreciate the advice on the tiered system. That's something that, I know it's been brought up in previous board meeting conversations, so that's certainly something that we can look into and kind of dive into more. We've never done it in the past. Um, I'm so glad you brought up the DHS bonus and the wages program and the TEACH program because I'm so excited, again, like, this year, as of recently, we have three staff enrolled in the wages program and two staff in, involved in the TEACH program, which is, you know, extra work on their part, but it's really paying off, especially because we do not offer an extensive benefit package here. So that's a true, I mean, that's an incentive for our staff, and I'm just so glad that we're able to offer that, and that the Department of Human Services allows that, offers that. And we're very hands-on with our staff. We actually, that bonus, uh, that $1,000 recruitment and retention bonus, uh, because our working staff are so busy, we actually, you know, were hand-in-hand with them in the application process because we want to make sure that all of our employees are getting the most out of their hard work and effort. So, yeah, I'm so glad that you brought that up.
Thanks, thanks a lot.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Keely? Okay, um, I think we'll move on then. But Keely and Lexi both, thank you for being, joining us tonight. I think, I don't know if you were online earlier, but mentioned earlier that the, uh, nonprofits that have asked for an increase, we, our current budget draft does not include any increases. And so this is something the council's going to have to consider as we weigh things out, and we hope to finalize things Monday. Okay?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Be safe going home.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, great. That's it for nonprofits?
Yes, now we'll plan on moving into the departments that we have not covered yet. And the first one, I believe, is the fire department with Dan.
So if you want to turn your booklets to the E-section, page 42, the township, uh, contracts and stuff is, from what I've looked back when I was doing... the township contracts and stuff is, from what I've looked back when I was doing my budget, pretty much stays the same as far as that goes. Further down the line, we get into the service and commodities. Partially, that decrease there came from when we had the storm damage from the wind this summer. We got that repaired. We had an insurance claim on that. And then the capital outlay, which is on page forty-three, is just those, initially Greg is always putting in there for three and I upped it to four this year, potentially because in the next three years, if I do four this year, then we do three and three. By the end of their lifespan, which is ten years, that'll put us, that will get us to the end. If we get four this year, three and three, then we'll have all new air packs which meet the NFPA standards. The, I just, just this week, I got in our ones that I had purchased from when Greg had budgeted last year. And those, if you remember, those cost on those, they went up about four hundred and fifty dollars per pack from when Greg had gotten his quote until I actually got them. Laura and I, Laura and I had conversations about that and we're hoping that with our number of fire calls that we had, that we'll be able to cover that in my budget to, and to continue getting those three. But that, that was kind of my thought press on, thought process on the air packs to try to continue to get that. One of the advantages, I think, when Greg started that was be, instead of, a lot of departments, they get a grant and they get twenty air packs. So that means in ten years, we have to replace twenty. Right now, we're at a good little stretch where we've gotten five, you know, three and three, and we've gone through until we get to that twenty number. I am working right now with Chris Whitaker out at Region Twelve on another grant. And on that grant, we discussed yesterday, I'm going to ask for ten, which would include the rest of them, but he said, we'll just see what happens. That was, his thought process was, we've only been asking for three and he thinks maybe we go for the larger number, knowing we need them. Maybe they'll consider us. So he wasn't really sure on that. But that's what I'm working on for the air pack side of it. Something I have in my budget for this year, also, you'll see a little up increases in our meeting room, in our hallway, the flooring is really bad. Some parts, it's, it's almost like a trip hazard when you're walking through. It's the twelve-by-twelve tiles and they've had moisture and they're starting to heave and it's, it's kind of a, a mess. So I have quotes to get that done. We were going to do the conference room, kitchen and entryway the first span, but since we've had the water damage, again, I had conversation with Laura and then we're going to do the hallway in the twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four. I'm thinking maybe we'll switch that and do the hallway and then the floor that got damaged in our water break this winter to get that all replaced right away. So that's cleaned up. And then we'll hopefully switch and get the other side done. The cost was a little different and Laura said today that maybe if that's, happens, we may have to amend a little bit from this year's money and switch it back to next year so I can cover the more expensive part. So the hallway and stuff was cheaper than the, than the meeting room and kitchen and that type of area.
Dan, are you looking at the same type of tile that you had? Are you looking at something a little more durable?
Kind of what we were looking at was doing kind of what they did in the, in the jail, the epoxy flooring.
Right.
The conversations I've had with everybody is, you know, they'll come in and they will, they'll grind it and they will seal it and then they'll put the stuff down and we should never have another issue with that moisture coming through the flooring, per se. So that's kind of where we're, that's, that's my plans with the flooring in the station, that type of thing.
Dan, is there peeling in the training room too, or is it just that hallway and front entryway?
So the, the flooring in the gym was not damaged by the water. When the firemen were in there taking it out, we had to cut it to get it out. And I, I've had conversations with ICAP on it about getting it replaced, but he really didn't lean towards that that would be part of the damage to the water line break. And I've actually have, I got a quote from one place in Carroll. I'm getting another one, trying to determine the cost on that floor. I'm going to guess it's going to be between two and three thousand dollars for that flooring. And it's been in there for sixteen years also, so it's in kind of a dire need of, if, we haven't put it back in yet and tried to piece it in there. We're just kind of trying to decipher if maybe that's something we do with our dance funding and, or something like that. Not really sure. We're kind of waiting to see where we're at with ICAP to see if we're going to have to make a claim on the, on the rest of it. The actual fitness room where the water damage was, the sheet rock's done. The painting is done, the trim's back on. We just don't have the entryway where the tiles all popped out and underneath the stairwell where that all came loose. We've got it all removed, so there's no trip hazards, but it's just, to put the black or the, those square tiles back down just doesn't seem sensible to replace it. That's why it was just, you know, if we have to put a claim in and we'll take that monies and hopefully fund it in the hallway fund to replace everything at once. That was my thought process anyways. One of the other things that you read the other night, we have in there, in the year of twenty-five, twenty-six is for a new rescue unit, twenty-six. The reason I, we kind of put that out there is, in the realm of trucks, our rescue unit now is a, is a two thousand and two unit. It's got about nine thousand miles on it, but it has twenty-one years of wear and tear. Our doors, roll-up doors and things like that are starting to, we see some real age. So in our process, we're thinking we need to get a new rescue unit. And we'd like to start that process like now because we were told in the last six months that it's a two-year out before you even would get a truck. So if that's the case, if we don't start it now, then we're just really going to be down the line for getting that truck. So if we start now, we would probably put it out for bids, I'm hoping, within the next two, three months. By the time all the firemen will sit down and we'll put a, a bid together, what kind of truck we would need, and then get it submitted so they could start the process and at least put it in line to be built. So that's kind of where our truck is, as far as that goes. I believe that our old truck would probably have some pretty good value to it, you know, low miles. I mean, I would, maybe there's some other departments out there or somebody that could use a, a unit that maybe doesn't get used as often as ours does. Rescue seven rolls on every call that we have. So it, it sees the majority of the use of, of climbing in and out and, and things like that. So it's a well-used unit. May not have any miles on it, but it's a well-used unit.
What year did you say that was?
Two thousand and two.
Okay.
On your building water leak, did you have any insurance to help pay for some of this?
We, I've submitted a claim, but it's a five thousand dollar deductible. So we're, I don't know how close we'll be to that.
Yeah, so we're still working through that process of actual, how much it's going to cost and everything and working with the adjuster and if they'll technically accept or pay out on it or not, we don't know yet.
Yeah, because they only, from how I understood, they only replaced the floor that was bad. Well, we don't want to replace twelve-foot of flooring if we're going to, you know what I mean? It doesn't make any sense to do that in my mind. Well, I figured if we get the quote, what that cost is, it'll figure out how we sit on our, on our claim against it if we go over that five thousand or how if we just handle it that way. The other thing I'll add real quick on trucks is, I don't know if you all remember, you know, we had, I had quite a uptick in my cost for repair and maintenance on a couple of trucks. The Tower Eight, where we had the two display screens, which runs everything in the truck that went out. Then we had a seal go out in the tower part of it. And then I also had a oil filter in the rear end that rusted through and blew out. So I, currently, I think my budget was for twenty-two, twenty-three was forty-five hundred, I think that's what it was. And I went well over that with, it was in the eight thousand figures. And hopefully I won't have any other breakdowns between now and July of this year. And again, having conversations with Laura, I'm hoping if our calls stay down to where they are, hopefully I'll be able to cover that cost with our, with my, with the budget, with the calls being low. Lot of scenarios there. Any questions?
Dan, are you at full staff?
No, we are not.
How many short?
We are three short right now. Yeah. Had conversations of, of, you know, we don't have any issues as far as calls. I mean, we always have trucks rolled. We don't have any issues like that. It's just tough to get applicants, people involved in it. The volunteerism isn't there, how it used to be, you know?
Anything else for Dan? Not going to let him off that easy on his first budget, are we? Thanks, Dan.
Okay, and then to go into the building side of it, you can turn your page forty-four. And not a whole lot has changed there either. I know in our rental department, we've had some talk of wanting to know where we're sitting as far as how the job is or how, how we've done with rentals. I know on Monday, Rick is scheduled to talk on where he's at with inspections that he's done and how he's, how close he is to matching those. And he's going to have some pointers on if he has discrepancies with locations, how soon that they fix them or where he's at with some that haven't got them fixed and things like that. So I, I think Monday we'll see a better numbers from Rick on our rental inspections coming. And the building side of it, I looked up today and it looks like we've had eighteen new home building permits come out. And I'm going to assume that next year, that'll, you know, after spring hits here, that'll have an uptick on that too with the incentives that Carroll's put out there. I hope that would increase. Any questions on that part?
Has there been anything on commercial projects?
I did not. I didn't, I didn't, didn't break that down.
Okay.
So if you're, I mean, you have the several, the Johnson's pool and the, and the other ones out there, I would assume they're in that eighteen.
Okay.
That's in there, I think.
Anything else on building? Good?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, next we'll have Wendy present the library budget. Another first budget presentation. I'm looking for which page it is too. It starts on page forty-eight.
Yeah, E forty-eight is where we'll start. So I've got some of the accomplishments for the past year kind of up at the top of the page there. I think we'll go over those kind of at the end. We'll do the budget stuff first and then we'll go a little bit over my stats if that's okay with you. We did hire a new librarian for a new position, the program coordinator this year. If you go down to the budget side of it, the, the state appropriation for twenty-three and twenty-four should be about the same. We will be presenting, the Carroll County librarians will be presenting to the supervisors on Monday. So this number is kind of an estimate for right now. I don't know what it will be for twenty twenty-four. Township contracts, those are based on the value of property, so that one may change a little bit as well. Miscellaneous revenues, that one is just a flat-out guess, just so everyone is aware. And that's what we think it's going to be kind of based on other years. So if you look at expenses, some of this is a little bit skewed. It's better to look at some of the other ones because we're comparing the financial year of twenty twenty-three to what is proposed for twenty twenty-four. And we've had a lot of changes going into somebody else's budget. There's always things that somebody focuses more on and someone else doesn't focus as much on. So we did, I did move some things around for the reestimate for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So a, a major one there is going to be the expenses for personnel is, is a, a big change, I think, for everyone. And then the capital outlay for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three is eighteen thousand and in twenty twenty-four, we're changing that to six thousand. On the second page, we are requesting an increase in the number of FTE hours for the library assistants. Right now, we have three library assistants. They were approved in a fiscal year twenty twenty-three for point eight-nine, which equates to about thirty-five point six hours. We are requesting that to increase to one point oh-six, which is about forty-two point four hours. So it's about seven hours a week that we're, that we're asking for there. The increased hours are for part-time workers that will help fill in some gaps like covering lunch shifts for full-time employees, desk coverage during programs and part-time staff coverage during our full-time outreach events. In addition to that, part-time employees do have specific duties that vary for each employee, such as managing our library displays and book bundles, looking for lost or missing items and verifying the information on new library cards. The capital request that we decreased this year is for computer updates. We have a plan to update a certain amount of public computers and staff computers each year, so it's not trying to update twenty computers at once. The, the full layout of the budget is on tab I, page one-ten. So the biggest increases that we are asking for are for the, in the repair and maintenance of the building, which is to include the price of the elevator service. It's a yearly service. The miscellaneous contract work, that in, that includes a lot of different things for libraries, pest control, it's IT services, which we have, I think, twenty computers. So there's a lot of IT service that we do. It's cleaning the buildings, things like that. I think, I would say the major increase this year comes from the increase in IT service. An increase in programming, and that's just because we are offering a lot more programming. We have a program specialist and she's kind of stepping it up and offering new programs for the library. So overall, that section is a seven percent increase. But our overall budget is an increase of thirteen thousand, four hundred and seven dollars, about two percent. The library trust budget is in tab S, page two hundred and four. And for that one, I'm requesting the budget to basically say the same as it was last year. I'm just kind of shifting the categories around a little bit. I'm increasing the book, for the books and not doing the consulting and professional fees as much on that one. So that's, that's all of the number part. So, you know, I get, I get asked a lot by people in the public, like, do you, do you feel secure in your job? Like, do you have good job security or people using the library? So that's why I compiled some of these library statistics. I do want to warn you that these library statistics look, look really great. This is not a sustainable thing. You're probably not going to have a three hundred percent increase in programs every year. Then a lot of this is just, it is showing a comparison to kind of the tail end of COVID. So it is showing that people are trying to come back and use the library more now. We are at or close to our pre-COVID levels this year. So that's pretty cool. So obviously, the, the numbers that are on the left side are kind of, did them in, in order. So it's got the three hundred and ten percent increase in programs and in program attendance. Then it's the number of visits to the website, database usage, study room usage, and that has absolutely exploded here lately. We've had several days where we've had to turn people away and say, I'm sorry, all of our study rooms are full, but there are some sections where we've got just tables you could sit and study at. We are very popular during finals week, I've learned, so that's good. But it's also, there's, there's people that are doing things for, for work that are working from home that come to the library. We've got very good internet. We've got a place where it's quiet. Some people like to be away from home to work on things because it makes you feel a bit more motivated to get things done. A lot of things like that, so those are our statistics. And then I like to compare, not only compare ourselves to ourselves, how we did compared to last year and do a couple of years back, but also compare to other libraries about our same size. So our circulation of physical items, again, if you look, most of these are at or above. We're pretty close to pre-COVID levels. The downloadable use has, has increased. The database use, that one looks a little weird just because in fiscal year twenty-one, the state library stopped offering some of the databases, so we kind of scrambled to get databases that we wanted to offer. And there was also a change in how databases were reported, so that one looks a little bit strange. The total use of physical and downloadable, you can see we are steadily increasing as well. And then it shows the, the in-person library programs, the in-person library program attendance. Looking at door count, which is the next one, we did have a thirty-five percent increase over fiscal year, year twenty twenty-one. However, that door count doesn't include a lot of programs that we offer outside of the library. So right now, a lot of our summer reading programs are actually offered at the rec center because we don't have space for a large group. And we do get some large groups for our presenters for summer reading. So those are offered there. We've been doing some other programs, like we did a story walk out at Swan Lake, which was very well attended. We got a lot of comments on, but those people aren't necessarily coming inside the library all the time. So that door count does kind of show that it is not... Everyone who uses the library doesn't always come into the library to use it. They can use Wi-Fi from the parking lot. They can get things on their Kindle, on their phone at home. So a lot of those resources are being used outside of the library. So if you look at kind of a comparison of how we are to some of our peer cities, I got this information from the state library of Iowa. It's not actually been released yet. It won't be released. The full report won't be released for a couple of months. But I got in touch with the state library and they were able to provide me with all this information. I compared us to fourteen cities about our same size. A lot of these are cities that we already compare ourselves to at the city level. So most of these, we are, we are about right in the middle. There's six that are larger than us and eight that are smaller. But we're pretty consistently in the top section. So if you look at circulation of physical materials, we're fourth. Downloadable use, we're fourth. Database use, we're fifth. Total use, fourth. Total number of people, library programs is fifth. But the attendance, we're third. Door count, we are, are falling behind a little bit there. And then wireless use, we are almost at the end. I feel like some of that is because the people who come into the library to use the internet, a lot of them use our public access computers. They aren't bringing their own devices in to use wireless. A lot of these other libraries also check out like mobile hotspots, and that counts as wireless usage for their library, and that's not something that we are doing at this time. The next stat is probably one of my favorites. So this is something that we look at at the library, as librarians, we look at this a lot. The total amount saved by library, by our library patrons. I do wanna point out that this only includes the checkout of physical materials. So this, this amount saved is by checking out books, movies, magazines. It's not coming to the library to read newspapers, using our wireless, going to any library programs, anything like that. This is just checking out things. So in the next section, also for the, the most popular books, we kind of, I explained to you there that in general, we assume that checking out a book or a movie will save a patron about five dollars. So a board book only needs to circulate one time to pay for itself. Children's books circulate twice, and adult teens or movies, we figure they need to be checked out three times to pay for themselves. So we were at, I was asked by one of my library board members to come up with the list of the most popular books. This is also something that we check out a lot in the library. And it does change if you base it off of calendar year or fiscal year, so we play with that a lot. If you do calendar year, Where the Crowded Sings is way beating everybody else. And as some of my library employees will remind you, they'll say, and four wins would like to remind you that there's only four copies of that, but there's twelve copies of Where the Crowded Sings, so. Some of that's kind of comparison, but it does kind of tell you how often some of our most popular things are checked out. And it just shows how many people are using the library. And I'm obviously new, so I did not know a lot of the Carroll patrons, and they are a very fun group of people. They're pretty loyal and they, they tell you when they like something and they tell you when they don't like something. And there's been a lot more times where they're telling me that they like something, so I'm pretty happy about that. Do you guys have any questions?
That last statement, does that include the council as well? A fun group of people.
I haven't heard any bad things from the council. So I really like you guys. You're like my favorite citizens.
Big budget timepiece.
All right, bring it on.
No, it was a great presentation. It really was.
So this amount saved, have we ever seen this before? I don't remember seeing it.
No.
So that's based off of if they would've, they got a book and they went out and buy it? Okay.
That is great. Yeah, it's actually something that calculates automatically by our, by our library system. So we can check on that, and we do check on that like multiple times a day. And the girls up front, they will get very excited and be like, oh, okay, if we get one more checkout, we're at three thousand checkouts today. Let's see who the next person's gonna lock in. And they, and they do that kind of thing all the time. And they get really, really excited when it gets close to a million. I'm like, I think next, I think this year, when it gets to a million, we need to have like confetti poppers and like throw a big party for one million dollars saved or something. That could be fun.
Do you, do you feel you have enough computers? You said people come in and use them. You're replacing one that was in the capital. You have enough? I just am curious.
Technology is a constant burden, I tell you. So the problem is that like we, we invite people to come into our syst, to our building and use our computer, which is hooked up to our internet. And then we hope that they don't like hack into our stuff and get into, get into everything. So we have to do a lot of IT services as far as virus protection, firewall, backup, things like that. And it seems like there's constantly something broken, I feel like. But I think that's a lot, that's just technology. And you have to keep, you have to keep updating them to stay up to date because if not, then nobody wants to use that really slow computer.
But you're meeting demand.
I feel like we are, yes.
Okay, thanks. That's good.
I just had a quick question for you. You did make a comment about large groups not being able to meet at the library. What kind of, I mean, I've been to quite a few of them with my kids being younger, but what count are you looking at right now that you can't get into the library?
So it's more of a specific section. So like on the social stairs, we can have fifty people. By fire code, we can have fifty people on the social stairs. And I think that has to do with the amount of exits that are close there. In the large meeting room, it's fifty. So if you have a group of over fifty, and a lot of our summer, summer reading programs, when we have a presenter, a lot of those are over fifty. We just don't have any place to hold that large of a group. So then we start having conversations that are, do we want to have more programs but have less people be able to go there so that they are coming into the library? Do we wanna keep having them at the rec center? There's two different schools of thought, you know, there's, we wanna offer this service to the community and have these presenters come in because they are really cool and they draw a lot of people. But the point of summer reading is getting people into the library so that when the program's over, they come check out a book or they wander around a little bit, so.
What do you think the approximate count is on those large programs, would you say?
It really depends on the program. I know Diane was saying that pre-COVID, they, they were looking at eight hundred for a, a day. So it would be two different programs, so about four hundred per program. Like, we don't have over anywhere near that amount in the library.
Where do you have it at the rec?
Theater, usually.
Okay. So I think there was some even happening at like the Adams School at one point.
Yes, they had done that for a while. And, and Diane does go to the schools and do presentations. They do things with Dr. Who at the schools. She goes and talks about the summer reading and tries to get the kids all ready to go and excited about it. And she does preschool visits that come to the library, and she goes to the daycare. So she does a lot of outreach and getting kids excited about summer.
Has given any thought to succession for her?
We are hoping she stays forever. She's kind of given some of the stuff to Melissa because she's our program coordinator. So I know summer reading is a big one, and that, that takes months of planning. We've already started planning summer reading. We have the presenters booked already. I mean, you have to do that September, October. So about the time you get done, you have about a month where you can breathe, and then you're like, what are we doing for next year? So she's handed that over to Melissa. So she has not indicated that she's ready to retire yet, but she really likes being able to have some of the other things, have Melissa kind of step up about.
The kids just love her.
They do, they do. You can hear anywhere she goes in the library, somebody's like, Ms. Diane! It's like she's like the local celebrity. I think she's more popular than Dr. Who, really.
Probably.
You know, other questions for Wendy? All right, well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that leaves us with?
Me, I guess.
It'd be you.
Awesome. We'll start with parks and open spaces. That is page fifty. If you wanna follow along on our actual budget sheets, that's on page one-thirteen and one-fourteen. I don't really see a reason to jump back and forth, so we'll just kind of concentrate. I'll do all the describing off of tab E, and then if you'd like to follow along, I'll give you the numbers for the other side. Really, parks don't bring in a whole lot of revenue, at least monetary revenue. Expenses are actually going down quite a bit, which that's mainly because of the ash tree project. After this one, this bid out is done, that is all the trees, all the ash trees for any of our grounds, whether that's golf or parks. So we will be leaving fifty thousand in the parks budget right now for ash trees. That's for the next phase of the project. And that'll be usually right of way. I don't know if we really have any other public spaces that have it. Here.
Few buildings.
Few buildings, but that'll more than likely get moved or it'll still be a part of the ash tree project. Excuse me. That is really all for major expenses. You know, our FTEs stay the same year after year. We, we are pretty efficient with how we use our part-time staff and seasonal staff. Really no reason for that to change. Only three capital requests this year. It's our tractor with loader, garden tractor that does most of our ball field repair up on the north fields, and then a mower with blower. Seventy-two inch mower, forty-eight inch blower, does all the sidewalks, trails, things like that.
That's the same one we took out last year, if I remember. We did a kind of a late poll, and I seem to think it was a seventy-two inch mower.
I think that was actually at a cemetery.
Was it? Okay.
If I remember right.
That's fine. Doesn't matter. I'm just curious. Continue, please. Thank you.
Is there any questions on parks? Simple enough. All right. We'll go to page fifty-two, and, and I would be one-fifteen and one-sixteen. You know, Wendy just presented on a ways to save. Would hate to see the amount that people do not save at the golf course. Lot of fun out there. But revenues, we increased those quite a bit to actually match what we have been seeing over the years. Lot of increased play the last couple of years, especially since COVID. Personnel services gone up a little bit with wages. Services and commodities staying about the same. We did add a little increase just because of our, our fertilizer and seed bills and obviously the gas bills as well. Just something we have to plan for. No capital outlay as far as actual projects or, or needs out at the golf course. We did move our golf carts, our thirty-five new golf carts to local option sales tax and our pump house project to local option sales tax. So I'll touch on that a little further when we, when we cover those two items. FTEs staying about the same. We are losing one of our part-timers. Going down from basically three-quarters a day to less than half a day. So we're still trying to figure out how we're gonna adjust to that, whether it's another part-timer maybe in the afternoon just a little bit. But as far as the FTEs, we should remain exactly the same. Any questions on golf?
I would just clarify when, when Chad said no capital outlay, he's talking no capital outlay from general fund.
From general fund, excuse me.
And then he talked about the, the other funding sources that were proposed.
I'll come back and touch on those at the end. Thank you, Laura. We'll move to the rec center, page fifty-four, or one-seventeen and eighteen in the back. Largest increases in personnel services for part-time due to the large increase for part-time wages, you know, lifeguards, CROs, any, any support staff like that from last year. We didn't really reestimate it last year after it had gotten done. And now we're kind of narrowing it down and seeing more specific numbers on those general increases. So those numbers have, had to go up a little bit. Capital outlay is really about the same as last year. Most of it's going to just new exercise equipment. You know, we've got a lot of aging machines. We're trying to get some in and out and get some new variety in there as well. And then addition would be a new floor scrubber. It'd actually be replacing one of our old, older floor scrubbers, which I believe is like nine or ten years old, and those are used five, six times a week, so. Any questions on the rec center? Leisure service, page fifty-six, and in the back, it's one-nineteen, one-twenty. Some very small increases in this, but that should also be matched with our revenue, and that's through ads, sponsorships, different things like that that we do for our, our teams and youth activities. We are also trying to introduce a couple of new either camps or programs. We're also looking at adding another kids' night out. I know that'll be under the aquatic center. But generally, anytime we have a large activity, all the, all the revenue from those go to leisure sports. So that would be the distinction. So we do think we'll see quite a bit more revenue, and I would say even this is pretty conservative number as far as revenue for this year. But that's kind of the gamble you take with introducing a new, new sport, new camp, new activity. I just don't know what kind of participation you're gonna get right away. Only real increase in services and commodities for some of our older or more, I guess, competitive leagues or ages. You know, generally, we've always gotten them a cotton shirt, you know, same thing since the dawn of sports, I guess. We actually are looking at getting some jerseys. Now, part of that will be offset by the actual advertisers themselves or the, the people sponsoring each team. So we, we do expect a little more expense, but it should be covered by, by our sponsors. So we are pretty excited for that. Really no difference in the full-time employee equivalents and no capital items request out of leisure services.
Does Little League come out of that?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
Chad, how many sponsors do you have?
We really started it this past year. I think they've done it in the past, but we really revamped it this past year and kind of went to the next level with it. But I mean, we've got a hundred and twenty-some, and that's any level of sponsorship. And that's from your bottom tier that may just sponsor part of an outing to a couple of them that spend, I wanna say our top sponsorship is fifteen hundred, and that gets you a couple of teams and some names on some different special events and, and things like that. Any other questions? Okay, go to aquatic center. That'll be page fifty-eight and one-twenty-one and one-twenty-two in the back. Main increase again is for the increase in. Uh, main increase again is for the increase in the part-time lifeguards, assistant managers, managers, everything like that. Services and commodities came down a little bit. That's because we generally would have a like boiler or a heater that we would always just have in there just because, um, more or less in the case that something went bad. Um, you know, they're all working fine. Uh, we're gonna keep those in more of a capital outlook kind of thing and replace them as needed and not just expect it to go bad every year.
Chad, the other reason, um, is we had that windstorm affected the aquatic store.
Exactly.
Or the aquatic center and so that hundred two thousand includes seventeen plus thousand dollars of, um, replacements that need to be done. But there's already revenue above.
Yeah, okay.
So that would be another reason why it looks so far down.
Yep.
Um, cause generally there, it really wasn't that big of an increase from year to year.
Yeah, yep.
Um, full-time equivalent is gonna remain the same. We don't expect to need to hire a whole lot more staff to be on at the same time. Um, quite the opposite, actually. Yeah, no capital outlay on the aquatic center. Any questions? Okay, move on to the cemetery, page sixty and one twenty-three, one twenty-four. Uh, really nothing big coming out of the cemetery. Capital outlay much less than last year because of some of the large purchases. Uh, we do have a truck replacement. It's a, I wanna say two thousand eight-ish. So generally not that old of a truck, but just the overall wear and tear of it. Um, it's just beat up and time to replace. It's a very high priority for, for Parks and Rec to get that.
Dan, you, uh, or excuse me, Dan, Matt or Chad, in light of what, in light of what Dan, in light of what Dan had said earlier about the delay on getting trucks. Now, this is obviously a little bit bigger truck. Do you anticipate any problems getting this during?
So we're looking at about a five fifty, um, just because it, it will primarily be hauling dirt. So it's not quite too, you know, small utility, but it is a, a large truck. Um, just for the fact that when you dig out a grave, a, a four fifty cannot handle all the weight in the back. And the difference between a four fifty and five fifty is about three thousand extra pounds the five fifty can, can haul.
So will you replace it or is it, you're gonna trade it? Is this gonna be an extra unit? Okay, cause that's a fairly new truck. It just hasn't been doing the job. I mean, looks, condition, getting kind of rough?
Beat up.
Okay.
Over the years.
It's a two thousand eight though, you said.
I, I wanna say it's a two thousand.
Okay.
Generally we keep it longer, but it's starting to have a lot of problems with it.
Okay.
Um, it, it's needing.
Probably not a ton of miles, but again.
No, I'm sure it doesn't.
Looks its age.
Okay.
Yeah, she's probably seen it out there.
Yes.
But it's primarily, it primarily just, you know, you pull the dirt out of the hole, you put it in the back of the truck, bring it in the garage, keep the dirt good. Next day after the burial comes in and, and does it. It puts everything back. Um, you know, sometimes, a lot of times there's two burials on a weekend, so you'll have to put quite a bit of dirt in the back of it and back and forth. So Chad, one of these was replaced two years ago? That was the other one.
Okay, that's probably, I think, the one I'm thinking of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, it's a gray one.
So that would be the one you actually see Jake drive.
Yeah.
Especially, you know, City Hall or Parks Department, wherever it needs to be. Uh, the other one, he does not really allow out on the road.
Okay.
That bad.
Will that even touch, will seventy-two even touch a five fifty?
Uh, well, it's, it's hard to tell. The only thing I would say is the sooner you get it out, it's probably, it'll probably be a twenty-four model year.
Yeah.
So like on the Ford side of it, twenty-three's are a short, short, um, build window. Um, but on a government and fleet side of things, typically they've been very short window to, uh, especially if you want a government concession or price breaks on those. So, um, I would say probably.
Do you generally know when that opens up? Cause I mean, obviously this is, this won't be until the twenty-four budget, so you're talking July and after.
Yeah, I would say with no more middle to, middle summer to early fall on, on the Ford side of things. But it'd be a short window, but I would say you're probably gonna be a year from the time you have an order.
Same way with the golf.
The other brands know better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the government price concession is, is something you really want to get in because there's some large breaks and some of that stuff, so.
Yep. Thanks, Chad.
Yep.
Okay.
On that, you know, a couple of the mini excavator attachments that we didn't get in this past bid or this past fiscal year, uh, when we got the mini excavator, just because it didn't, you know, it went over budget with these extras. So it would just be getting those two pieces and then a sod cutter just to help Jake make it as clean and cut as possible. So really from here on out, you know, now, once he gets the mini excavator and he gets a sod cutter, he'll actually come in, cut the grass out of the spot, dig the hole, you know, they'll have the burial, put everything back and then they'll be able to put the sod right back on top of it instead of just throwing seed and, and hay on top of it and letting the grass grow. So. A little cleaner. It'll make things look a little nicer out there, too.
Chad, did you say that the sod cutter is also used periodically at the baseball stadium?
Correct. Yep. Used there quite a bit, too.
Has he received a mini excavator yet?
No.
From the time of work?
No, and haven't heard any updates on, on when.
Yep.
But I think in their bid, it was about a year out.
Okay.
Um, any other questions on cemetery? Okay, uh, we will jump to local option sales tax, a couple of the different things that we have coming out of that fund. Um, skate park repairs, we were notified that.
Oh, hang on just a second.
Sorry, yeah, yeah.
Oh, back in this, okay. Got it.
Going to a particular page. Where it's on, yeah.
Is that what you're doing? Okay, thanks.
So right now we have fifteen thousand estimated for skate park repairs. Uh, everything on the skate park is actually in really good shape. The only problem is, is in certain sections and there's areas that are sinking. You know, it kind of goes back to some of the, the geo-gridding and different things we've had to do on some of our projects because of bad soil or just sinking. Um, I believe these are about twenty years old and really what we're gonna have is a concrete concept company come in and hopefully just basically mud jack certain areas up so we lose some of those lips. Cause that's our real danger point right now is that we do have some pretty aggressive lips in some spots and we're really just trying to get ahead of it before it gets real bad and becomes an actual problem. Um, slow pitch ball field wall repair. So this would be the big wall that goes on the, on the west side of the slow pitch fields. Uh, if you've been back there in the past year, you can see that wall is physically caving in. And I would actually like to get the council's temperature, I guess, on if we would actually move that up into twenty twenty-three and maybe move like the rec center crafts and activities room renovation into the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So just kind of swapping those two items, um, just because we would like to get it done pre-state baseball, pre, pre-Father's Day tournament there, just because of the shape of that wall.
Chad, with that wall, you can wa, if I remember right, you can walk right up to it and is there, is there a railing that's kind of?
There is a railing and that's where you can see the most difference because instead of it being straight, it really starting to bow and, and get out there. Um, one thing that will help us a little bit, um, it will go back as an all-concrete wall with a railing on it. Um, but the three ash trees, I believe, that are going right through that driveway will be coming out, too. So, and those should be coming out before the, the wall is actually repaired. So shouldn't have any extra stress on the concrete.
So you're saying those ash trees are part of this current contract that they're working on?
Yes.
How's that going so far, Chad?
Four trees out.
At the golf course?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have any problem switching.
I think on a liability standpoint, it makes most sense.
I'd be on it for all, yeah.
Perfect. Um, batting cages at youth sports complex. So this will be the two batting cages up to the north fields. The ones that are currently there are basically boxed in with either railroad ties or old telephone poles, uh, ag lime in the middle and the nets are falling apart. So this would be taking one out at a time, uh, pouring a big concrete slab, getting new poles, new net and then probably I think our plan is to put down some, uh, turf. So all-weather turf on it. So you don't have to worry. You know, if it just rained, it's now just a sloppy mess. Um, we've done, I've done projects like this in the past and it makes everything look nicer, newer. Um, you know, especially with, we had now have high school play out there, whether it's, you know, Kemper softball. Uh, both Kemper baseball and Carroll High baseball both play all their nine, ninth grade games out there, all their middle school games out there. So, you know, we definitely need to get rid of some of these things that are falling apart and have some good little upgrades up there. Um, next would be the thirty-five new golf carts that we've, we've discussed. I think that number is pretty conservative, but you know, with being a year out, I wanted to make sure we would have enough room. But all my estimates are gonna be about a one oh five, somewhere in there, I believe. Also, those are all about a, about a year out on order, too. Um, merchants park improvements is in here. Um, I remember I was a hundred and fifty out of local option sales tax. A hundred out of, yeah, a hundred out of hotel motel and.
And a hundred of ARPA funds.
It was a hundred of ARPA funds, okay, for that project. We still haven't heard back in anymore on that grant. I joke with Whittaker this, any day now. We'll be hearing good news, but we shall see. Um, switching over to hotel motel, uh, we have some, a few small projects that we're looking to get done. Wrong page. Uh, Graham Park in Rolling Hills Park Electrical. Now, this would just be repairing and improving some of the electrical lines that we have down there. Um, you know, we have some lights that are down there. Um, some different electrical panels throughout the park that people tie into, you know, whenever there's special functions or family gatherings. It would just be improving those. And then the South Side Shelter House Heater is uh, showing its age. Uh, we've had a, had some extensive work done to it this year to keep it going. It's just time to replace it. That's our only inside, um, heated shelter that we have for rentals year round. Um, so if we, we lost that, we obviously couldn't do any, any winter activities in any of those or rentals. It's about it for hotel motel.
What about trails? What, we haven't talked about trails. I see, you go, do you have any money on that?
There was some money and Laura can touch on it.
So.
You got a hundred thousand?
Yes, so what we have been doing or had been doing is setting monies aside out of both hotel motel and local option sales tax for a number of years. A transfer from those funds into a capital projects fund. Um, my last estimate was at the end, for the end of fiscal twenty-three, after some of the current projects that are just about finished up, the northeast park, parking lot and the drainage ditch. I believe there should be somewhere around a hundred and eighty thousand sitting in that fund that could go towards another project of sorts, trails. And then this presentation here does show, um, continuing with some set aside hotel motel a hundred thousand and local option sales tax at a hundred and fifty-three thousand, or excuse me, a hundred and fifty thousand in fiscal twenty-four to go towards another phase of a trail project.
We haven't heard, you got, I haven't heard what you plan on doing with that.
Right now we're in limbo. Um, with the last study that was done, the very last portion of that project, I believe, was to connect Northeast Park North. And there really wasn't a lot of appetite for running that there yet.
Right.
Um, now we have a couple of things that could work in our favor looking forward as far as some of the land in the east. Uh, possibly connecting a trail, you know, through a development. Um, there's also been a lot of talk of, okay, well, let's just look at the next stage of the project. Where, where do we want our trails to go? Where do we want them to connect and where do we want them to end? Um, you know, the southeast part of town, you know, going from the SOC trail to, whether it's trying to get all the way back up to Northeast Park somehow, um, that's been brought up. But as of right now, we don't have that next step of the trail study, which is probably where we would go.
Okay.
Anything else, Chad?
That's really.
Well, I got one more question here. On the motel, we got ban shell improvements at thirty thousand that we spent this year?
They haven't been spent yet.
No.
So what do we, what do we, what are we doing with that this year?
That was basically to look at different repairs. That was budgeted last year.
Okay.
To go ahead and try and.
Well, that was that engineering study? Okay.
Now, that wasn't spent. The, uh, engineering study was twenty-five hundred, four grand.
And that would have probably been paid out of the general fund.
Yeah.
So this is.
We actually had that earmarked for engineering. So this would be to take the next step and do some repairs, some improvements to that.
So you're banking thirty thousand for that for future use? I'm not following you. Did you spend thirty thousand?
I think, I think what the discussion was at one of the recent council meetings was that the council wanted to do some of these basic repairs. While we figured out long-term, do we want to tear it down and rebuild? Do we want to do this and that? I think there was some water leakage at the top of the deal, some electrical and that's, this money is set aside to do those things.
So it's setting their way to those things.
Okay. Yeah, we talked about banking this and then that study included comparing materials to stop the leakage. As you said, it's really an eyesore on the east side. So we talked about the sealant and so on. Yeah.
Anything else for Chad?
Yeah, state baseball. How much income do you get off state baseball?
Actual income, uh, just what they pay us in our contract.
And that is?
Fifty-seven a year, fifty-seven hundred.
I think we have it budgeted at sixty-six hundred.
Sixty-six hundred? Yep, the state gets the revenue from the gate. Um, the, what's the sport? Iowa Sports Network gets all the advertising dollars off of the filming and sponsorship for the games. Um, really what we get is more on the backend from local option sales tax and hotel rental stays.
Who's running the concessions this year?
Gonna find that out. Kemper and Carroll will be heavily involved. Just, you know, two years ago, the first year we had it back, the city was involved underneath. Um, just no reason for us to do that. So, um, Kemper and Carroll stepped up and, and kind of split everything. We'll be having those conversations again on who wants to do what, who has the ability to do what. They, I mean, they both did really well for, for their youth athletics this past year.
Anything else for Chad? Well, does that wrap it up for you? Anything else you want to add? Okay, Laura, that's pretty well it.
That wraps up all the different departmental presentations. So now it's what does council have other questions on? What kind of conversations do you want to have about the proposal? Are you good with it? Do we want to move to the next step? So that's, I'm gonna, I guess, open it up a little bit to, to you. Um, the one major thing, I guess, what we kind of talked about it earlier today was the outside agency refunding requests.
Okay, and then, you know, as we alluded to earlier, I mean, if you'd like to make a decision on that tonight, I mean, it certainly, the council's wishes, we certainly can. If, that behooves you as well, um. You know, how are we doing on time and everybody's schedule? I mean, we can certainly finish that up and wrap that up for you and then Monday night, shorten that up as a result, right? Is that your thoughts?
Yeah.
You might note too, we put a closed session on Monday in case we need it. Uh, we have union negotiations tomorrow and depending on what comes out of those, we may or may not have a closed session to run those things past you guys and, and get some consensus.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
So you're putting it, the way I understood it, you're putting it on the agenda, but if it's not needed, we can pull it.
Absolutely.
Right, yeah. Had a little discussion with the county today about how they add things to the agenda and it's-
Oh, yeah, we don't do that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, there's a big difference here, so I like how we roll.
What?
Oh, they add stuff to the agenda with-
Without twenty-four hours.
Yeah. Yeah, but I, it's coming to a stop.
They don't, they don't have a lawyer sitting on their paperwork.
Yeah, don't look at me.
Yeah, they don't have Dave, they don't have Dave sitting to the left. It's just been a little looser, but yeah, they add stuff to the agenda.
What's the line item that says a hundred and fiftieth anniversary, but there's nothing on it? Was that from just past year, like the centennials?
Oh, yeah, from, yeah, we-
From our past centennial, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
I missed that. I tried to hide those things. I just was curious.
Well, do we, do we wanna make decisions on, on, uh, ARL and, and childcare? Okay, I'll open it up for discussion. Let's take childcare first, that's the six-hundred-pound gorilla. Thoughts?
Laura, do we have funding available somewhere that we can at least talk about where it's gonna come from?
So I would say there's a few different options council could look at. You would have, even if you wanted to look at Hotel Motel, Local Option Sales Tax, there's fund, balances in those. If there's, um, other things in the general fund that we would wanna utilize those fundings for and continue to pay for the daycare center out of the general fund. So what you'd be doing there is shifting around the expenses a little bit. Other things you could do is look at increasing to the tax levy to ask for more taxes to cover that, or decrease expenses somewhere else in the general fund, or some combination of all those.
Mark, you've been on the board there before, I think, right? Or still are.
When I was with the county.
Yeah, I'm just curious, cause she didn't mention, unless I'm missing it here, like, do you have, and I should've asked her, but do you have an idea of, like, where does their budget sit? Like, what are they, what are they showing for revenues and expenses?
Oh goodness, Misty, I, yeah, I'd be, I'm so far removed. He's on it now.
But I've had a lot of work with these.
That's what I was kinda calculating.
About one point two million.
Their expenditures are one point two?
Uh, income.
Income is one point two.
What's their expenses?
Well, they're about break even.
Are they on food, um, grant or anything through the state?
Yeah.
So-
Are they five oh three C or?
Yeah.
I had a little bit of trouble with her numbers here. She wants to go to forty thousand, that's a twenty-three thousand dollar increase. But she said seventy-five cents an hour is gonna pay for that, well, times-
There's twenty-five employees, she said.
Yeah, seventy-five times twenty-five times two thousand eighty hours a year.
Okay, I had thirty. Is how much?
It comes to thirty-nine thousand.
Yeah.
And she's asking for forty.
And she's asking for twenty-three thousand to fill that gap.
Oh, she's, yeah, I see what you're saying. Well, maybe she's using other funds, I don't know.
Okay.
This is an area in our audit where we've been zinged before too. I don't know how much weight to put on that at this point, but something to be aware of anyway.
I don't recall. Remind me, why?
When Feldman came in last year, is that when that?
I think this year too.
The Rob Sand deal. Demanded rationales for everything.
Don't we do a twenty-eighty with him?
They're not a governmental entity.
But-
We do have a place.
Yeah.
Saying that the city's buying services or calling it economic development. We haven't, we haven't been tested on it. We don't know.
Great.
So, yeah, we've not been tested on it, so to speak, but I know this is what a lot of other communities are doing.
Yeah, when I went to the state convention, everybody's like, fine, we're gonna support, you know. That's how they, a lot of them felt. I don't know if you wanna get zinged again or not.
This year we're gonna get zinged anyway.
It'll be in this year's audit because the, the contracts were not in place, um, before, or for the fiscal twenty-two funding requests. They're in place now for fiscal twenty-three, but they weren't for twenty-two, so there'll be another comment on that.
The purpose of my question that I had for Keely either, and, you know, she had kind of a political answer for it, but it, more or less, this isn't gonna be a one-time thing. It's, it's gonna be the new norm. And so I'd want this council and future councils to be prepared for that.
I, I was the one that recommended we bump it up to seventeen thousand. It was maybe six, seven years ago. And I, I think it was only at fifteen, maybe Laura would know. And, um, I, I think, I would like to see their, I'm all for them. She does a fabulous job. They all work really hard. I had students who worked there. But I think they need to look at, as somebody used the word sustainability. And I think if we keep plugging the hole in the dyke for them, they're going to keep repeating their flawed, um, business model, so to speak. And I know I've talked to people who are good income earners and they said they'd gladly pay more. I mean, with that tiered system. And then the, the lower income families, they have a, a big table. I have it here someplace where people can get childcare, uh, revenue to supplement, you know, to help them out so they can keep working and afford the childcare. And I know, again, I had a lot, students at DMAC who received that, the childcare to take, you know, they were getting that, that, uh, benefit from the state. So I, I don't know, I'm in a quandary. I, I don't think we wanna leap for me to forty thousand at all. But the, I think they need to start seeing, we need to fix what we're doing now. Like that tiered system, she said she'd look into it. I, I personally think that's the way to go to sustain, you know, um, the salaries they wanna pay. But also to, they'll, they, they can do a tiered system and work with it as they give raises and, you know, with cost of living increases too. Or, or not cost of living, but, um, you know, their costs are going to go up and then they adjust their, their, um, tuition accordingly. I, I, I'm not a business person, but it seems to me that they have a lot of stress on themselves by constantly getting a little bit here, you know, going all over the place. And I, I, I just think they need to look at it differently from a business perspective. So I, I think maybe we could give them a few thousand more. And, but tell them, I, I don't know, I, I don't, unless you wanna keep paying forty thousand a year or then they'll come up to fifty, it's not helping them. We're enabling a problem, is, is how I see it. And I think they need to look at, at something that I asked them about. She said we'd consider it. They're great people there, they really are.
One of the concerns that I had, and, and I think this is a great organization, I think the economic development side of it definitely is there. The concern that I had, as we put the budget together, as I mentioned, we were way, way, way short. And we went to each of the departments and cut multiple things, pushed some things forward, we adjusted some things in order to make that fit. So it's difficult from my perspective to give a hundred and thirty-five percent increase. Is it needed over there? Absolutely. Are we the source for it? I'm not sure. But again, it was difficult for me to tell all of the department heads, we need to come up with a lot of money to make this fly. And then, and that's why we did not initially put the money in. We thought, we'll let you guys make the policy decision and we'll figure out the money end of it. Uh, depending on what you do, so.
I guess I'm kinda of the opinion, and I, I don't wanna, this is kinda bad, but I mean, with what you just said, we have, uh, negotiations coming up, we know we're gonna face a huge impact in salaries. I guess I'm of the belief that we kinda let it be what it's been until we can figure out and go forward next year and maybe consider increases next year.
I would look at that too. Look at the economy and see what's gonna happen in the next six months and really, you know, focus on it. My question, you're on the board, right?
No.
Laverne?
He's just an advisory thing.
Do they look for grants on there?
I went to a state convention and went back to him and, and helped him out with some stuff that I learned there. No, I'm not on their board.
So just in the time she was presenting, you can click on, uh, grants.gov. There's a lot of five oh three, say it again.
Five oh one, C three.
Think of those for grant applications for all kinds of facets that they could look at.
That's more for building the buildings, not sustaining the, the hourly employees.
There was hourly employee, I can show it to you. I'll pull it up, but it was for growth. There's certain ones in there. A big one right now for, for government grants is growth. They're out there. They want people to grow sustainable, sustainability and growth grants. So I was wondering if they looked at any of those, so. I don't know, I'm on board with JJ, just to let it ride until next year's budget. I think we have a big wave coming up as far as our own budget. Trying to make sure everything gets paid. But that's up to everybody to decide.
So I've been asked to be on a committee, committee after the first of the year with some citizens in town to think about how they can help the daycare center fundraising or, or whatever, so.
I had a discussion with, uh, the Chamber of Commerce also. Again, I'm new to all this, but in my head, I was thinking that another huge potential partner or beneficiary of the center are all of the industries and businesses in town. And that it might be something that the city and the chamber could partner with in discussing some kind of a foundation or something that these business people, uh, or especially the, the big corporation, the big employers have seven, six hundred, five hundred employees. Maybe they would be a potential source of some kind. I'm not sure what it would be, but.
So again, I wanna, I, I need update on that too, is, is I went out to Pella and the hospital and stuff like that and told them if they would be willing to give extra money, would, and their comment is, is if we do that, we'd like to have some reserved spots for our employees, for their children. The daycare told me they will not do that. They will not reserve spots for people that would be willing to pay extras. There was a debt in there. So as far as, they would just have to donate money to that organization without asking for reserved spots.
I think they have to make some changes on their side too, somebody's gonna give you some money. Give and take to make this thing work. Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Big changes.
So I also talked to him about what Carolyn said, the sliding scale. And, and the, the, the number that they need to get from eleven to fifteen dollars an hour is what they're trying to get to. That is three hundred thousand dollars a year additional, and that has to be sustainable. So, you know, they don't, you know, they're sensitive to the low-income people, I get all that. They were not wanting to go to the sliding scale when I talked to them. And she mentioned that there, that they haven't done it.
Rethinking. It sounded like she was open to it. I think they just need to face the reality of what's working, isn't working now. What should, what should we try as we move forward? Maybe they need to poll their families, see what they would do. They have all income levels of families there and I, I don't know, they need to look at other options.
So are we pretty well ready to tell them? Maybe not necessarily no, but not yet, or not this year perhaps? I mean, I, I'm not sensing that there's a whole lot of support for-
See where we end up with our budget.
Well, that's what, that's what we're trying to get at.
Yeah, I guess.
That's what-
But we don't know, we don't know negotiations yet though.
Well, and we've got one more decision to make with ARL too. And so, what are your thoughts with ARL? You're asking from five to seven, as I recall?
Five to seventy-five.
Five to seventy-five, yeah.
So my question is, Brad, we spend six hundred and fifty dollars a month now. That's seventy-eight hundred dollars a year to the vet clinic. You know, do we, is all that much money used every year out there from us?
Month to month, sometimes yes, sometimes no. We just don't know what we bring in. Some months we only bring in a few dogs. Other months we'll bring in dogs that, um, are full of fleas or lice or whatever it could be and they need care. And that's covered with that contract, so it's-
When that price went up, and I think, I can't remember, I think you were probably on the council when it went, it almost doubled, I think.
It did, but I think we had paid since like nineteen seventy-something, we paid nothing.
And, and what we were told at that time was that part of that is the twenty-four-hour day, seven-day-a-week access to the facility. Uh, the officers have keys to the side doors so that they can, uh, if they do pick up animals any time of day or night, they have direct access. And then prior to ARL, uh, euthanization and all of that stuff was covered as part of the contract, I think.
And they still do euthanize some-
Very few.
Animals that Rescue League probably doesn't know about, but-
My question is, is that seventy-eight hundred, that's what we're spent out there that-
On our side, yes, because we don't have anywhere else to go with them.
Okay.
So it, we're kinda at the mercy, we're kinda at the mercy of the vet clinic.
And so is it safe to say that the services that ARL provides supplement what happens at the vet clinic as far as animal control?
Absolutely does, and, and she's right, she talks about Mary taking control of all this, cause Mary, um, so i-if, after, after the, the dogs at the vet clinic for more than ten days by state code, they won't, they get rid of it. We wouldn't have anywhere else for it to go. It'd have to be euthanized.
And then they spay and neuter as well, so that hopefully-
But I think it's under the Rescue League's bill for those ones.
Right, but what I'm saying is by them doing that, it helps reduce future problems by additional puppies, kittens.
Potentially does. And we're mainly cats is our big thing that we pick up, that go to the Rescue League.
I was with the county when the ARL started their project out there and they came, you know, they came to the county, you know, for funding and, um, I was a part of the board then and it, it was denied only because of sincere concerns about sustainability. And so here we are, so many years later. And, you know, they're finding out that it's not necessarily, even the business model isn't sustainable without increases. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying I told you so, but I'm just, what I'm trying to say is, is it would continue to be so if we don't seek that there's some type of equal value, you know, for the investment. And so, um, that's just the only point that I'll make.
On the daycare side, have they been raising their rates to everybody or they've been keeping?
Oh, they have annual raises, yeah. Pretty much every year, yeah.
Yeah, they went from ten dollars an hour to eleven dollars an hour with their rate increase for their employees.
Oh, she's, he's talking about the, your parent children.
What does it cost to take a child there and so forth? What did she say? Two, two hundred a week? Is that what I heard her say?
I think she just-
Or she just used that as an, two oh five?
That was an example she had used.
Primary and secondary, she said, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Just throwing that out there.
But yes, they do raise the rates every year.
They raised their rates when they were able to raise their pay.
From ten to eleven.
Yeah, it's the whole guy, it's expensive.
So what's your thoughts on ARL? Increase, hold the same? What's your thoughts? Don't everybody speak at once?
I think you hold the same. They've gotta make changes on their side too. I mean, if this is a private business, if I'm running in the red, I'm gonna figure out how I'm gonna get to the black. So, I know it's a minor increase, but.
Anybody else? Got a consensus somewhat? Okay. So now the last piece of the puzzle is what turns out tomorrow, is that we have-
A lot of it.
A lot of it will be.
As, as we mentioned earlier, thirty-nine of our, uh, sixteen-
As, as we mentioned earlier, thirty-nine of our, uh, sixty-five employees are covered by the union. So whatever happens tomorrow, and if we have to go past tomorrow, would have a significant impact potentially on the budget.
Okay, and then what you're seeking for, uh, Monday night is, um, at least a date for the public hearing to set the maximum levy, but you'd also kind of like to pencil in what that max levy would be then as well, correct?
So what we would do, yeah, the next step would be to hold or set the date for the public hearing for the max levy, like you had said. If there, depending on, I suppose, how union negotiations go tomorrow, if they come in within our rough estimates that we have in the budget, then if council's good with the levy that's been proposed, Monday night, we could take that action to set that public hearing date and that will set the max levy number at that point, and then we would hold the public hearing after that.
And we're currently at eleven eighty-nine?
Yes.
Correct?
Roughly.
Okay, roughly, roughly.
Once you set it, you can't go up, or you can't go down.
Correct, yep, yep.
Right, I need that. Okay, anybody else have anything to add to that?
I would say, yeah, if there's any discussion about wanting to go up before you set the public hearing, we would want to have that now or Monday. Oh, I mean, it's, it's really easy on my end at this point to set that max levy, to get that information prepared, that I can have that ready for Monday night. I guess we'll kind of wait and see what tomorrow brings. And then if it's looking favorable there at that, when I say favorable, I mean, within our, our limits of the, what we have in our budget right now, then I might go ahead and bring that forth on Monday night to set the public hearing date.
That'd be my suggestion unless anybody has any heartache over that. Okay, all right, what else?
Well, I guess, yeah, I don't, I don't have anything else, so we've gone through all the departments. It's just if you guys have questions on anything that's been presented, need more information, we might have a discussion about a particular project being proposed or something along those lines.
I guess the only thing that I have, I briefly talked to, to Jeff about it the other day. It was brought up again, the mall bathroom cleaning contract.
I mentioned that, we spoke about it a little bit this morning or yesterday, which...
There, I mean, I guess what was brought to me was there's an organization in town that's willing to do it for free as long as they get, uh, cleaning supplies paid for. They won't do it on the weekends, they would do it during the week, but it would be free volunteer.
Really?
Yes.
Nice.
I didn't know that.
Way nice. Is that, it's kind of spending.
And that's been previously brought up and was, they were told no, so. Just throwing that out there is, I mean, it's not that much money that we pay for that a little bit, but...
So, which, we can definitely look further into that, kind of what the current arrangement is. Yeah, we pretty much inherited the current, um, cleaning contract of who, who's been doing it. So I don't have a whole lot of details of like how often they do it or what time of day or anything like that. Um, the funding for this does come out of local option sales tax. And so if it's left in the budget and then later, uh, the arrangement changes and we don't spend it, then it just goes back into the pot of money to be reallocated for something else.
It doesn't affect the levy, basically.
And it also does not affect the levy, correct?
How long are we under contract with our current? Is that an annual thing or is it month to month?
Well, we, I guess we really don't have a contract, so to speak, or, I mean, the services were just being provided when we took over. We're paying for it.
Remind me back when we built these bathrooms, did the city not at that point say, we'll help you out with the renovation of the bathroom, but we were not going to take on the cost of the cleaning, et cetera, of it?
I believe that was one of the selling points, I think, to the council, and Carolyn, I think you were there.
Yeah.
They basically said, if you'll give us, was it fifty thousand dollars?
It wa, it cost around fifty-six. And, and they said, then you're done, because the downtown merchants will all kick in. And, um, and, and then they, it just unraveled.
Didn't the Rotary have a significant contribution to that too?
I was on a committee with a bunch of downtown people. Clay was on it and we, they, they went around door to door. I think Clay and Bob, they went door to door and said, they were each supposed to give twenty bucks a month is all. And they just, it just unraveled. They said, oh, we have our own restroom, we let our clients use, et cetera, et cetera. And, um, they, it ju, you know how things go. Good intentions at first and then, but we paid a hundred percent. And now we're paying the water bill.
Yeah.
So...
Well, some of the larger contributors stopped paying is what started it.
Yeah.
What started this forty-five hundred?
I think Todd Canny has the books. He was working with Janine, she was keeping them. And, uh, so there are books, um, for anybody to look at if we request it.
I was thinking that we were supposed to review that after having had that conversation.
Oh, with the water?
Was it in six months or something?
Yeah.
So I'm, I don't remember when that happened, if it ever got brought back to us.
Yeah.
It probably didn't, so this is probably a good time to review it.
Yeah.
We'll look into that, J J.
Yeah, the water is what, thirty, forty, what, a month?
The, the unwritten agreement, so to speak, was the city would pay the, up to fifty dollars a month. So if it goes over fifty, then they would be responsible for it.
Because I know, like, Janine was buying all the supplies for the restroom and, uh, Ron, you know, being a contractor, you know, he repaired things, even worked on the plumbing and, you know, that she really kept it going, yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that, good to know. We just talked about it this week.
Yeah, we'll do some more asking of questions and stuff.
Okay, what else? Anything else? You know what I'm seeking?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn. Is there any further discussion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Bauer?
Yes.
Gordon Arrow?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Stace?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Strack?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.